With the gallery view. All right, so hello everyone, hello Fullerton people tuning in on Facebook. So this is a Fullerton Observer newspaper. It's hosting obviously a candidate forum for the candidates running for Fullerton City Council. And we decided to do it, to organize it by district. And so there are three council district seats that are, you know, up for election. And so we're starting first with, sorry, hold on one of the technical things. Just want to make sure. Okay, sorry about that. All right, so yeah, so there are three council district seats up for election. And so they are districts one, two, and four. And so we decided just to kind of organize this numerically. And so we're starting here and we have both of the candidates who are running in district one. And so I think what I'm going to have you guys do, if you don't mind, is so kind of a little bit of ground rules, I guess, first for the forum. So we have a series of, a series of questions and, sorry, yeah, okay. Technology, okay. So we have a series of questions that we, that we were compiled by, you know, writers and editors of the Fullerton Observer. And we also put out a call to our readers to ask, you know, questions on, you know, important topics related to Fullerton. And so, but before we do that, I'm going to give you, and you'll have basically one minute to, to respond to all of the questions. And so we have over here with the headphones is Matt Leslie, one of our writers, and he's going to be the timekeeper. So he'll put up a 30 second little marker, you know, when you got, there you go, 30 seconds left and then, and then, when, and then I guess, is there a zero? Yeah, time's up, there we go, okay. When, when the time is up. And so we, you know, we want to be able to get to as many questions and answers as possible. And so again, for those of you who are watching from 6:30 right now until seven o'clock, we're going to be speaking with the two candidates from district one. From seven to eight o'clock, we're going to be speaking with the four candidates running in district two. And then from eight to eight thirty, we'll end with the two candidates running in district four. So it's, should be an interesting and hopefully informative little discussion here tonight. So, but before I ask you any questions, I'd like to give you each one minute just to briefly introduce yourselves. And if you could say maybe, why are you running for city council? So Andrew, we'll start with you, you're, you're right there. So yeah, go ahead.
Hi, Andrew Cho. I first moved to Fullerton when I was in sixth grade as in 1979, went to parks, went to sunny, went to Laguna Road. My two brothers went to Sunny Hills, I went to serve. I went on to UC Irvine and pretty much spent about 30, 30 years in Fullerton. I've seen it a bustling commercial and residential community. Unfortunately, it's declined and I really care about the city and want to see it succeed. So I'm running to really make Fullerton a great place to live, but also a sustainable place to live, hoping to reform how government does business, hoping to reform and improve the revenue side of things with the city and get it on a pathway of sustainability.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Jung, Fred Jung, go ahead.
I've been a Fullerton resident for 30 plus years, all in district one, attended Sunny Hills, coached football at Sunny Hills. All my children go to Fullerton schools. My oldest son graduated from Sunny Hills with a football scholarship. My oldest daughter is a varsity cheerleader at Sunny Hills now. I am running to serve our district one and Fullerton at large. People are struggling, families are struggling. Indeed, one of the benefits of running for office is you talk to people. And I was able to speak with a 77 year old retiree whose husband has Alzheimer's and dementia. And he has good days and bad. And today was a really bad day for him. And her birthday is tomorrow. So I get the opportunity to wish her happy birthday, went to her home, gave her something for her birthday to celebrate. And she's all alone, struggling. And those are the residents that I, I'm running for to represent them equally. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, so let's jump right into the questions. So again, these are sort of a combination of questions that we at the Observer developed and then also questions from, from readers. So the first question deals with the budget. So obviously, it's a major, you know, topic of concern for city council during this pandemic, especially, you know, the budget is facing a, you know, a deficit, you know, in part due to COVID. It seems like the city has provided, sorry, this is a long way of asking this question, but the city has provided one sort of fix, which is a proposed sales tax. And so my first question, I guess the question is, do you support the proposed sales tax? And if not, what specific proposals do you have to address the city's financial problems? So I think we'll switch it and we'll start with you, Fred. So first, do you support the sales tax? Secondly, I guess if not, what other solutions do you have for the budget?
I do not support Measure S, the sales tax measure. I'm against it. I've been pretty vocal and out front on this issue. I made it clear as to why I don't support it. It would make us the second highest in the county and it has no expiration date. So we can put all of these projects together and complete all of these infrastructure projects that we like and it would still remain at nine percent. I don't think in the middle of a pandemic, that's a good thing. However, we can look into refinancing our underfunded pensions using current low interest rates and study issuing bonds for the remainder. We can reprioritize the city budget, eliminate burdensome and costly regulations so that when the pandemic ends, we can be well on our way to economic recovery. So there are solutions out there, we just have to be strong and have great leadership to accomplish these goals. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Cho. So number one, do you support the sales tax? And then if not, what, what specific ideas do you have to address the budget issues?
I'm also not supportive Measure S. I do agree with Fred that there's no sunset provision, which makes us a permanent increase. The, the rub is in district one, most of the residents there are equidistant between Costco La Habra and Costco Fullerton. And they go to both. And so the reality is, it's going to backfire in a lot of ways. And no, it is not a good time to increase taxes for the lowest income earners in the city. And again, I have a problem with it not having a sunset clause. In terms of solutions, as a bankruptcy attorney, I do my best to help my clients stay out of bankruptcy. And again, you, you've got to cut your costs, your fixed costs, you've got to reprioritize how expensive expenditures, expenditure decisions are made. But to stay out of bankruptcy, you've got to increase your income. It's the revenue side that the city needs to work on. And what I would do is continue the, the legacy of a friend of mine who passed a couple of weeks, years ago, who was instrumental in bringing in CJ Foods, the largest dumpling maker in the nation is located in Fullerton. I would continue his legacy to work with domestic and foreign companies to locate in Fullerton, bring jobs to Fullerton and increase revenue, the revenue side of the budget.
Okay, thank you. I know it's tough with the one minute because it's like, you know, we could talk about the budget all night for, you know, for example, but I just want to be able to, you know, kind of get as much in here as we can. So, all right, so I guess kind of related to that. So from a reader named Wendy Florin, we have a question which says, "Our roads are arguably the worst in all of Orange County. Repairing potholes is not a viable fix. If elected, would you make repairing our roads a priority and how would you propose to pay for this?" So we'll switch back and let's see, Andrew, you can go, you can go first on that one.
Well, again, the, the question is an easy one to pose, that the answer will take a lot longer than a minute. Other than reprioritizing the city's expenditures, shifting over some of its budget to roads, there are some of them that are, a lot of the, the residents I've been speaking with don't appreciate off-roading in some areas of Fullerton and what it does to their vehicle alignment. But service delivery, services in Fullerton, the next four years, council members will be shepherding a process of reprioritizing, moving funds from one area to another. It's going to be a difficult call to make. I'm willing to make those calls. I'm thick skinned enough to, to do so. But with the current revenues, it's very, very difficult, but there, there should be some restructuring, re-defining of what the city's priorities are. Roads are very, very important. We all drive them and we really should focus on the hardest hit areas and need to do so quickly.
Okay, I think I might have a follow-up question. I'm going to, I'm going to assert my follow-up question rights, but I'll let Fred go, Fred go, and then I've got a follow-up question maybe for both of you. So Fred, again, do you need, did you get the question?
Yes, so as a 20-year board member of one of the district ones largest HOAs, I'm proud to have led the effort to repave our roads regularly and maintain our community standards. That takes leadership, it takes sacrifice on, on the behalf of the residents. But our residents are in, recognize that well-earned D that we received in our roads. It is, it is not economically feasible thing for those that are in the lowest income bracket of our society to be driving on these roads and having to repair a tire. You know, we made a decision in our HOA recently to install fiber optic internet, give our residents a choice away from terrible spectrum and their monopoly. I attended the last INRAC meeting and will continue to educate myself on the challenges we have in the city to maintain services in the middle of an economic recession. And when elected, I'll reprioritize rebuilding our aging infrastructure because it's important. Those that are in the margins in our community are impacted by these roads and we, we should have a duty to make sure that's taken care of. Thank you.
Okay, so I guess my follow-up question is, so Andrew, you talked about, you know, restructuring, you know, some of the city's, you know, revenues or expenditures. Is there like a specific area that you would be willing to cut? I mean, if, it's, it sounds like, you know, in what you were saying, that there's a need to, to cut or reallocate funds from one area to another area. I mean, can you be more specific on that? And then I'll, I'll ask the same question of Fred.
Well, I'm not privy to the data and evidence that staff have. I have reviewed their last budget study session. But other than spreadsheets, I, I really couldn't tell you exactly what I would cut. Again, it's going to be a very difficult process over the next four years to, to decide where to cut, where to trim the budget, but more trimming is absolutely necessary. And some serious trim is going to be necessary because looking at that spreadsheet, four years out, you're looking at insolvency for the entire city. So serious cuts need to be made, serious redirection of funds. I can't tell you exactly where without being privy to what the staff is looking at.
Okay, Fred, can you give me any specifics on where you think cuts could be made?
Well, I think, I think we can all agree that infrastructure means a lot more than roads. Roads are, are the obvious things that are dire need of repair. But there is so much else in our city that requires attention. You know, a city's budget is a statement of our values. We need to reprioritize our city budget and focus on our, on new revenue, critical infrastructure needs, whether or not, you know, a sales tax measure passes. We have major issues with our aging water pipes, our lights, our bridges, and it's just not roads, there's sidewalks too. So we have to pay attention to all of those things because if we say no to things, just to say no, things will only get worse. So rather than finger point down the road, it's something that we need to address right away, start reprioritizing our city budget to reflect our values. Thank you.
Okay, all right, well, so let's, we'll go ahead and move on. So we have a question from a reader, Faith for Koochi Morris. And somewhat long question, but she asks, "How will you address the homelessness crisis in Fullerton? Fullerton recently built a navigation center or slash recuperative care navigation center, which is an important but temporary solution. So thinking more long-term, do you support expanding permanent supportive housing for formerly homeless people? That would be, you know, I guess for those viewing at home, permanent supportive housing is basically like low-income subsidized housing with wraparound social services." Yeah, so I guess part one of the question is, how would, what is your, how would you address the homelessness crisis? And then secondly, I guess more specifically, would you support expanding more permanent supportive housing? So Fred, we'll start with you on that one.
Two individuals died in our city in August. One was David Kim, current American. They died because they were homeless. Shelter is a right and we need to take care of the folks that are in dire straits and make sure that they are indoors. Let me be clear, we are in a major housing crisis. The state is mandating that Fullerton build over 13,000 more housing units by 2030. The Southern California Association of Government Regional Council, they made that decision for us. And we have a year to plan about 13,000 plus units and nine years to build them. If we don't stay on track, the city could be fined hundreds of thousands of dollars every day we delay. So the senior citizens that I speak with are facing eviction at a local senior assisted living center. I stepped in today to make a call to ownership to say that there is an eviction moratorium that has to end. These practices of threatening our seniors must end immediately. We have to have leadership for these things and I'm, I'm honored to be champion for housing. Thank you.
Just to clarify it, so you, you would support an eviction moratorium, is that what?
Yes, that is correct. It's, it's not just me, the federal government and the CDC say that it is a health threat to our country and that needs to be extended. The governor has already done that. So I'm in support of both those things because it's absolutely correct. We need to be indoors in the middle of a global pandemic.
All right, I have a follow-up question, but we'll go to Andrew next. So Andrew, same question, so how would you address the current homelessness crisis? And more specifically, would you support building more permanent supportive housing in Fullerton?
Well, number one, my decision would rely on the data, reliable, accurate data in terms of utilization of the facility on Magnolia Commonwealth. If the facilities over, overutilized and short on beds, the, the city's decisions are already mandated by law that it cannot enforce its anti-camping regulations without the number of beds it needs based on the population census of, of the homeless in Fullerton. So the devil's in the details, it's, it will see how, how utilized or under or overutilized it is. But I'd be very concerned about underutilization, lack of utilization because they simply, because the homeless simply won't avail themselves of the services that are there. Many of them will not avail them of the services at that facility. And I would not be in support of creating more of those facilities if they're not utilized and if they're not attaining measurable, the measurable objectives, the goals that are set out for them.
Okay, thank you. Fred, you, you mentioned something that was kind of related to another question that I had, which is about that seemingly unattainable goal of 13,000 new housing units within the next, I believe it's eight years, or seven years. I mean, what do you see, and then Andrew, I'll ask you the same question. What do you see as the city's role in achieving that goal of, you know, that much more housing? I mean, how, how do you do that? Seems really difficult.
Ambitious goals are the hallmark of good leadership. And we all know that that's going to be a difficult goal to achieve, but we got to achieve it, it's a requirement, so we have to get after it. One of the things that I would recommend is mixed view zoning. You know, we have to rezone a lot of the property, commercial property in particular in Fullerton. You know, you can build housing near transit districts like our train station and build, you know, high-density housing, affordable housing. So while it's an ambitious goal, and I agree with you Jesse, 13,000 units is, it's a lot. If we have a shared plan with common sense, responsible and experienced developers, we get some of these burdensome regulations out of the way and we work hand in hand with the community in a transparent manner, we can get these projects done. It requires leadership and I'm prepared for that. Thank you.
All right, Andrew, same question. So how would you, you know, given the, the goal of, you know, 13,000 units, how, how do you envision the city's role or I guess city council's role as achieving that?
Well, like with Fullerton, there are many cities that are aggressively developing vertically. It's really literally the only way you could do it is to go vertical. The, the difficulty is going to be in deciding where to make that happen. I agree with Fred, it's got to be near transit zones. I believe there are legal restrictions that it must be within certain proximity of them. It's not, you're not going to build a 10-story facility on Bastard, Chury and Euclid in a, in a neighborhood where it's just incompatible, out of character for that location.
The tree farm property, right?
Sure, sure. So it's got to be in an appropriate area, it's got to be an area that makes sense for, for residents. And like Fred said, I agree, it's going to take leadership, it's going to take the ability to withstand criticism and to do the right thing for the community. But other than going vertical, because most of Fullerton's built out, I don't see where else it could be done. Again, it is legal, it's, it's mandated by law by the state of California and it's got to be done. It's a very aggressive goal, but I agree with Fred, it's got to be done.
Yeah, okay. I don't envy you your task. I know I get a lot of letters to the editor, you know, at the paper and, you know, it's, I think the council's, sorry, just pontificating here, the council's job is balancing, you know, you know, the, the needs and desires of different groups, you know, people wanting to protect the environment, but also build more housing. So it's a tough balance, I get it. Okay, let's see. Looks like we got time for maybe one or two more questions. So from, from Patty Hanzo, she asks the question, "How will you seek justice in policing? What needs to change to make the city's police officers more accountable? Do you support, actually, this is something that we added, but do you support the establishment of a civilian police oversight board?" So I guess the more general question is, how to achieve more justice and accountability in local policing? And then more specifically, would you support a civilian police oversight board? Andrew, we'll start with you.
I'm somewhat agnostic on the issue. Again, it's a very easy question to ask in a short amount of time, it's a very difficult and lengthy discussion. There are laws on the books that apply to and make police already accountable. Let's enforce those laws. Let's provide training, let's provide counseling, let's provide, I've heard residents say there should be routine random psych testing. I don't know if I agree with that, but there are a lot of ideas out there that could resolve the issue of use of excessive force. Training, I like how Yang put it, president candidate, that they should, all police officers should be black belts in jujitsu. And there might be some wisdom in that, to use the least amount of force to obtain submission without the use of lethal force. But there are laws on the books already, I don't know about a citizen oversight commission, but I'd say enforce the laws already, the laws are on the books. I don't know if burdening police officers to make an already difficult job even more difficult is a solution, but I'm open to hearing and deciding on ways to increase accountability that doesn't overburden police officers' already difficult job.
All right, thank you. Fred?
I am not in favor of deep funding our police department. In fact, I applaud the recent reforms that the department has made. I want to thank Chief Dunn and I'm excited to see the creation of the Police Chief's Advisory Board. If it requires a citizen oversight committee, then, then we're, we've got the stakeholders in the room and the police department wants to work in conjunction with our community to create one, I think that's a great positive step forward to do that. I continue to actively listen to members of our community about promoting more transparency and more accountability. In fact, I'm proud of my endorsement from Fullerton firefighters and appreciate the trust and confidence of our public safety employees. So it is, we have a national movement here to make sure that those that are in the margins, that are marginalized in our community are recognized. I don't think we should ignore that, we shouldn't be tone deaf. Thank you for the question.
All right, and then I think we have time for one more question. So because, you know, we're doing this by districts, so I'd like to end with a question which is, what do you see as the most pressing and important issue or problem that's specific to your district? And so Fred will, will have you go first and then, and then Andrew. So what's the most pressing, unique problem to district one?
Right now, it's the Bastard Chury Tree Farm. I can, I can make a few, but that's the one that I am most concerned about. I am an advocate of open space. It is so limited in district one. District one has bearred the burden of single-family homes for decades in Fullerton. So I am actively championing open space in the, on those two parcels. In fact, one of the parcels is so disjointed, there's no developer in their right mind that's going to take it. So again, making sure that quality of life, and maybe it's the homeowners association in me, the quality of life needs to be maintained in Fullerton. So I'm going to be advocating that and championing that. I look forward to all the things to come and the challenges that come with that. Thank you for the question.
Thanks, Fred. Andrew?
It depends on what part of district one you're looking at. North of Rosecrans, everyone I've spoken with, it's the roads. If you're adjacent, if you're at the Athlina area or adjacent to, to Bastard Chury, I agree with Fred, it's going to be about open spaces, it's going to be about no development, no development in my neighborhood. But it, it really depends on which residents you're speaking with. The residents of Amherst Heights are very happy with the roads. So it's going to be a mixed bag, it's going to be about listening to all residents' concerns and all stakeholders. It's about whether parks in Sunny Hills can accommodate more students and accommodate the density. But I would maintain the character of the area. And again, I agree with Fred that it's going to be very difficult for any developer to come into that area.
All right, you guys, well, we are out of time for, for this segment, so it's seven o'clock. So I really appreciate you guys joining in and, and participating. And I believe there will be another candidate forum coming up with the League of Women Voters, that's something, I think, early October. So we'll be, we'll look forward to seeing you guys there as well. So thank you very much, I'm going to let in the next.
Well, I want to, I want to thank you very quickly, Jesse. I want to thank candidate Cho, who I've known for, for years, I've known him and his family for a very long time. It's good to see him virtually. Thank you very much for doing this.
Good to see you, Fred.
It's a tremendous community service, thank you.
Take care, guys, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, so, well, the district one candidates leave, I'm going to allow, I'm going to let in the district two candidates. So just bear with me as I. transition. All right. Hello. Then we got one more coming in. So Dr. Kazi, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes. Mr. Dunlop, can you hear me?
I can, Jesse. Good evening.
Hello, good evening. And Mr. Sargent, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
All right, and Mr. Chang, can you hear me?
Yep.
All right, so welcome, everyone. So this is, I guess, Section Two of our, of our forum. And so these are the candidates for District, running for District Two. So we're going to have a little bit of a longer time for this section, because obviously there's more candidates, so we want to give adequate time. So what I'd like to do to begin, I don't know if you guys were tuning into the first part, but kind of the ground rules are you have one minute per response, and then I'll reserve the right to occasionally ask a follow up question. But basically, one minute per response. So the first question, it's not really a question, but it's just, if you could briefly introduce yourself, and if you could answer, why are you running for city council? And so I'm going to start just within the order in which I see people on my screen. So Chuck Sargent, if you could go first. So just introduce yourself, and if you could state who you are and why you're running for city council.
Good evening. My name is Chuck Sargent. I'm running for city council District Two. My family has been here since nineteen sixty-nine. My main purpose in running for city council is, my focus is to repair the streets. That's my main focus, why I'm running, and to bring new businesses into Fullerton to raise our tax base without increasing fees constantly. And basically, that's a hundred percent of why I'm running in this, in this election is we need to fix these streets, and the only way we're going to do it is to bring businesses and raise our tax base without raising taxes on the people. Thank you.
All right, and then I forgot to mention, if you didn't see, we have Matt, who's one of our writers, the guy in the headphones, he's the timekeeper. So he'll be keeping you guys, holding you to the one minute limit with a thirty second midway reminder, and then time's up. All right, so, yeah, so Mr. Dunlop. I don't know why I called the last candidates by their first name, and I'm calling you guys Mister, but I don't know. It's a quirk of mine, I suppose.
Well, either way, Jesse, I've been called worse, so that's fine.
All right, so introduce yourself, and why are you running for city council?
Good evening. My name is Nick Dunlap. I'm a third generation Fullerton resident, born and raised here in town. You know, grew up playing basketball at the Boys and Girls Club, attended Fullerton schools before graduating from UCLA, and now I live here with my wife Bianca, where we raise our two little girls. You know, we're active in a number of groups and organizations across the community, because we believe there's no better place to be than Fullerton. But, you know, as many have outlined, there are numerous issues facing our community today. For one, we've got a twelve million dollar budget deficit and a six million dollar unfunded pension liability. And we've kicked the can on those issues for a long time, and it's time that we address them. Two, our roads and streets have been rated by OCTA as being the worst in all of Orange County. But for those who live here, we don't need a study to tell us that. We just need to fix the streets. And third, homelessness remains an issue, and we need to maintain public safety through world-class police and fire departments. As a lifelong Fullerton resident with deep ties to the community and a history of success in the private sector, believe me, nobody will work harder for you as your District Two council member than I will. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Kazi, so introduce yourself and say why you're running for city council.
Thank you, Jesse, and thank you to Fullerton Observer for, for hosting this important forum. We all are here because we care. My name is Dr. Faisal Kazi. I'm a neurologist. I'm active at St. Jude Hospital. I have been serving our community and our patients for years. I'm a father, I'm a husband, I'm a business owner, I'm a community servant first and foremost. My motivation for running for office comes from the fact that I have seen and touched human life, both in its most resilient phase and both in its most vulnerable phase, as I do when I see my patients, and as I do when I care for my patients, and as I do through my community service and nonprofit work, where I provide free of charge healthcare to those who need it. I'm running for council because the basic necessities and the mere comfort and peace of mind of our residents is critical. Our roads and infrastructure need an absolute revamping, and it has to be our top priority. Then goes our growth and development economically. It's an absolute imperative, because it relates to number one. And lastly, most important to me, of my three platform issues is also the public health of our residents, particularly our seniors. Thank you.
Thank you. And lastly, but not least, Mr. Chang. So introduce yourself, and why are you running for council?
Thanks, Jesse. My name is Mackenzie Chang. I'm also, like the other gentleman, running for the council in District Two. I also grew up here. I went to Laguna Road, Parks, and Troy High School. That my education made me who I am today. I've been a Peace Corps volunteer in Ukraine. I've worked as, worked as an asylum officer and volunteered all across Orange County with refugee communities and underserved kids as well. I'm running because I kind of agree with Nick here, the number one issue is our budget. It's, it's something as a young, young person who grew up in Fullerton and wants to see Fullerton continue to thrive in the future, that we need to address. And we, we definitely have to address this issue as soon as we can. The pensions need to be addressed. I've been doing a lot of research on that and back and forth with a lot of people in the community who are also worried about that. And, yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you. So, all right, so first question, and you, a number of you mentioned this already in your introductory statements, but it seems like kind of the, the elephant in the room is the budget for the city, you know, given both the impact of COVID and just, you know, general budget problems or shortfalls. So my question is, number one, do you support, I mean, it seems like the current city or city manager is proposing a sales tax as a solution, or sales tax increase as a solution, one solution for the budget. So part one of the question is, do you support the sales tax increase, also called Measure S? Or, or if not, what other, and I want to encourage you to be as specific as possible. I realize you don't have all the data maybe on this, but what specific proposals do you have to address the city's financial problem? So first, do you support the sales tax? And then, I guess, if not, or in addition, what ideas, specific ideas do you have to address the financial problem? So we'll, we'll go in reverse order this time. So Mr. Chang, if you could go first.
I caught me off guard. No worries. Yeah, I don't support Measure S. Like many residents, especially during a recession and difficult times, a regressive sales tax is not the way to go. I specifically would look at working in good faith with the pension old, the people in government, our government workers who are holding pensions, and try to negotiate with them a, some sort of agreement that we can come to. I know the California rule is in effect, and I have seen progress on that, though. The California Supreme Court has supported the two thousand thirteen reforms in, in the courts. So I believe that it's something that can happen in the future, and I, I think that's a way forward that we can lead and help make Fullerton sustainable for the, for future generations, so that we don't become bankrupt. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Dr. Kazi, same question.
Yeah, thanks, Jess. I have repeatedly expressed my reservations for the sales tax, because taxation in a time of recession can have unintended consequences. Yet at the same time, this is a decision to be made by Fullerton voters. I think if this measure passes, I'm one to have pledged and, and request pledge of others to support at least eighty to ninety percent of the revenue to be dedicated to infrastructure, economic stimulation and economic growth, and where we have lost a lot of taxation, including the transient occupancy taxation from hotel services. I, I believe that we can go into a robust economic recovery shortly thereafter. Recovery must happen, and we must facilitate that to the extent the city has a number of its permits and licensure requirements to facilitate retail growth and growth of, or growth of e-commerce and home businesses. I think those elements will really enhance our productivity, will help us balance our budget, will help us have the kind of revenue. Look, I'm not new to this. I'm a small business owner who's been able to retain his employees through this pandemic with some, with some due diligence and some in-depth cover, in-depth analysis. And I'm certainly capable of analyzing the new economy where we can go into this recovery phase and balance our budget.
All right, thank you. Mr. Dunlop, same question.
Thanks, Jesse. So I am not supportive of Measure S. I think, you know, Mackenzie noted importantly that this is regressive tax, and, you know, unfortunately, it has an adverse impact on those, you know, on the, on the lower end of the economy or on the lower end of the socioeconomic brackets. I think what's, what's important to note here, and at least as I've seen in, you know, my lifetime in Fullerton, you know, there's really been no economic development plan. And we're often so focused on, you know, the expenses, that we lose sight of what's really important, and that's revenue. And, you know, there's not been a concentrated plan or effort to grow our economy locally. And I have to say, I'm very excited about the project being planned at the Kimberly-Clark facility. You know, that's about a one point two million square foot logistics and industrial center that's going to bring an estimated two to three thousand jobs to Fullerton. And so that's the first big step in the right direction. And if we can continue to build off of that momentum and grow our industrial base and add more of those jobs, the city is only going to continue to improve. We'll have the tax revenue that's needed, and we won't have to raise taxes.
All right, thank you. Mr. Sargent, same question.
Thank you. I want to apologize. I just finished an hour and a half town hall downtown, so I didn't get a chance to get back to my office. So I'm trying to wing this in my truck. I apologize. First of all, I oppose the tax, and I don't need to give you a bunch of reasons why. It just doesn't work right now for the citizens of Fullerton to do any tax raising with the COVID. And I don't think people are going to vote for it anyway. Number two is, I want to point out something that was mentioned before, that somebody would attribute eighty percent of that to go to infrastructure or anything else. Well, I've studied a year with the city manager on this budget closely with Ken Domer, and I can tell you right now that in a general fund, you can't tell the people you're going to give eighty percent of any fund when you don't have control of eighty percent of the fund. You can't do that. That's, that's one correction. We need to be honest and transparent with the people and quit telling people you're going to do something you can't do. So that's the first thing I'm going to say. Secondly, the only way we're going to generate and make our tax business or our tax base increase is, is to actually focus on businesses that are actually, businesses that will bring in tax base, other than hotels. Auto dealerships are a fantastic tax base for the city compared with the city of Orange. They bring in four point one million dollars a year for the city tax. We, we get two hundred and eighty-six thousand for that, so I think we could produce something like that. Also, I do think the Kimberly-Clark project is a good project. I just, hopefully, they, we get the right labor in it, and we bring the right contractors to do the job.
Thank you, Mr. Sargent. I had a follow up question in my mind, but it went away. So we'll move on to the next, next question. Oh, I guess I wanted to, it seemed like Dr. Kazi, he was referencing something that you had said. I mean, do you see a way to, to designate sales tax money for infrastructure? Is there some kind of mechanism that you're aware of to do that?
Well, it is, it is going into the general fund. The general fund is at the direction of the council, so I do see a way. Thank you for addressing that.
All right, let's see, next question. So this, this, some of these are from our readers. So this is from Wendy Florin. And this kind of goes to what some of you have already mentioned. She says, our, our roads are arguably the worst in all of Orange County. Repairing potholes is not a viable fix. If elected, would you make repairing roads, our roads, a priority? And I guess maybe this is the key part of the question, how would you propose to pay for this? So we'll go in reverse order, and so we'll start with you, Mr. Sargent.
Well, first of all, I've been here since nineteen sixty-nine, and the city's evolved to what it is today for many, many reasons. I think it's bad management by planning commission and council over the years. I think we've had some good city managers. But in order for us to get on track back with our city streets again, we have to bring our marketing corridor up, that's our downtown businesses, and we're going to have to be creative. We're going to have to invite businesses in. They're not going to come in here and, and offer to come in when the city's in a deficit like it is right now. I think that it's really important that at this point, that we create some new relationships with major corporations, whether they be auto dealerships like Norm Reeves or Penske Automotive, and bring into some open properties that we do have coming available, and see if we can bring that in, because that is going to be the key to solving the problem. But let's not make any mistakes. When you see my sign and you see my name, I am running for the streets a hundred percent. I will stay focused on the streets. I will work tirelessly, daily to figure business ways that we can make money in our city, and I will work night and day to figure out how we can put our marketing corridor to be a competitive downtown day business. And I think that's going to bring our tax base up, and that's what it's going to take, not only with the taxes going up, but having those ideas.
Got it. Thank you. Mr. Dunlop, so, so again, I'll read the question again. So it's, again, Wendy Florin asks, our roads are arguably the worst in all of Orange County. I think you mentioned that earlier. Repairing potholes is not a viable fix. If elected, would you make repairing our roads a priority? I think you said you would, but the big question is, how would you propose to pay for this?
Yeah, absolutely, Jesse. And you know, one of the, one of the big concerns I know around my neighborhood is my daughters can't even ride their power wheels around the block, because it gets stuck in potholes. So in all seriousness, I think there's a couple of things that we can do. We've talked about the economic development piece, and I think that's absolutely critical. It's bringing businesses and jobs back to Fullerton. It's going to further expand our tax base. But aside from that, you know, I've noticed, you know, Ken Domer, the city manager, recently hired an assistant city manager to work under him. I think what, one of the things that I would, I would empower that person to do is to apply for state and county grants that are available for funding for transportation. You know, there's money right in front of us that we're not applying for, that we can get access to. And so I think there are a number of things that we can continue to do that don't cost us anything, and we just haven't taken advantage of those opportunities yet. So I would like to see us do some of those things to get the ball rolling.
All right, thank you. Dr. Kazi, same question. So how would you, would you make, I think, I think everyone probably has said they'd make repairing roads a priority, but I guess maybe the, the better question is, how would you, you know, pay for that?
So prior to that, I think, you know, people need to have a sense of, of progress here. I walk to and talk to families in Laguna, Laguna Lake area, for example. People tell me they hate coming home. I mean, this is really impacting the basic peace of mind of, of our residents. So it is no less, no less a priority and an absolute priority for me, which is why my pledge to really redirect any potential future revenue to the maximum feasible amount towards roads and repairs. Economic stimulation is always the number one factor in terms of city, increasing your basis, tax basis. So that's, that's clearly on our, all of our minds, and that is also priority number one. That's fairly interrelated to our first objective. Secondly, you may, you, we have to do feasibility studies. We have to do matching grants. We have to do creative ways to, to make those matching grants available. Those are the things we can do to, to obtain the kind of necessary money that has been available through OCTA or through the state as, as a first and foremost step. And then we can let our residents know, they hate, your number is going to come. Maybe it'll come in five years, maybe it'll come in four years, but as long as they know, they'll have some confidence and trust in the council.
Thank you. Mr. Chang, same question.
I mean, I could be a contrarian, say I hate roads, and I think they should be bad forever. But obviously, roads are important. We, we unfortunately depend on the city to build and maintain our roads, and they've done a very poor job of that. I would love if we were able to generate more revenues through economic plans. I am not a person who is entirely, a person who believes that that's going to work out. I think there should be a backup, because we don't, we don't know the economic situation that's going to occur in the next five years. We don't know when the next COVID is going to happen, when the next crash will happen, right? So we, we need first and foremost build a base, a backup. Make sure that our spending isn't too high. Make sure that our revenues one hundred percent can cover, or will be covered in the future. And I think that's the most important way that we'll fund better roads in the future. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Our next question comes from Faith Porcucci Morris, a reader. She, this is kind of a long one, but you'll, you'll get, get the sense of it. How would you, how will you address the homelessness crisis in Fullerton? As you probably know, the city recently partnered with Illumination Foundation to build a navigation center slash recuperative care center over by the airport, which is an important but temporary solution to homelessness. So I guess part one of the question is, what is your kind of philosophy? So I guess part one of the question is, what is your kind of philosophy or approach for addressing the homelessness crisis? And then part two is, do you support expanding or building more permanent supportive housing in our community? I know that was kind of a contentious thing. There was a proposed property at 1600 West Commonwealth that, that didn't happen. So anyway, so number one, I guess, how will you address the homelessness crisis? And then part two, do you support permanent supportive housing? And I'm just going to start at random this time. We'll start with Mr. Dunlop.
Hey, thanks, Jesse. So that's the, this is the issue of our times. You know, I think first and foremost, we need to respond to the issue humanely and showing compassion for, you know, for mankind and for those who have fallen down on, you know, on hard times. I am, I'm excited about the shelters that have been built, because I think we're giving people the opportunity to get back and to, uh, get back, you know, to get off the streets and take a step in the right direction. So from a, from a supportive standpoint, I believe that having the, you know, pairing services with that housing, I think, is a critical piece. And when you've got that, I think when you have that sort of full package together, that's your one step closer to making a difference. But I also think it's critical, and one of the things that we absolutely have to get back to doing is in, is enforcing our laws. And that means, you know, that for people who are breaking the law, who are trespassing, who are loitering, whether it's, you know, on our streets, public parks and private property, we have to be able to enforce our laws. And so I think that's absolutely critical in us getting back to, you know, in us getting back to normalcy here and helping people get the help that they need.
Go diagonally. Dr. Kozzi.
Thank you, Jesse. I, I had a patient who was sitting in the Anaheim Community Center parking lot and sleeping there for weeks. He ran out of his seizure medications. I ran down with the prescriptions. I got him his medications. I took him to one of the hotels close by in Fullerton. I put him in there for a week. He didn't stay there. He couldn't handle the environment. He wouldn't stay at a shelter. He couldn't handle the environment. He thought his seizures would come. There are psychosocial needs that are top priority that need to be addressed to really solve homelessness. One of the things that Illumination Foundation program in Cheltenham does is brings those necessary services, both medical and social. That's critical. With the social uplifting of these individuals and economics and job training, we economically empower them. When you economically empower them, you can move individuals from transitional housing to permanent housing or affordable housing. So there's a clear method. The North Spa Program driven by the county is a first, very incredible step. That program must continue. We must continue to fund our portion of it, working with all the other surrounding cities as, is, is even a greater achievement that we have not had in the last few years. I think we're on the right track. We have solved half the issue. We can take it to the end.
Thank you. We'll go to Mr. Sargent. So again, the question is, "How will you address the homelessness crisis?" And then secondly, do you support building more permanent supportive housing?
Yeah, I'll start, I will start out by saying, number one, the homeless situation. I've been working on a homeless plan for four years, working with four other states, four other governors, representatives to put together a program in our city. I think that the programs that they're using in Albuquerque, Arizona, and a few other states, Colorado, they have programs that are working. I've been working on this for a very long time. Being the only candidate with a law enforcement background, I do know the challenges of our officers in, on a daily basis with the homeless and going through, wearing a uniform through the Kelly Thomas case. I know how hard it is for officers to face off that. I have a program that I already put a business plan together for the homeless. It's called A Better Way. It works in joint venture with the churches. I've studied it using some platforms from, from some other states. Basically, what it does is it takes off a small percentage of the people that do want to work with my program, and they can get off the streets daily and make money. And it works, like I said, in joint venture, and I'll get into detail. They can't do that tonight. You don't have enough time. I did explain it thoroughly, an hour and a half in my town hall, how we would do it. It works very well. Secondly, yes, I do, I do support the housing. I do. But I do want to make one comment about the, I, I've been a CFO and president of my company 22 years, and I can tell you that we've hired homeless, and that's the best way to get them off the street is give them jobs. The institutions are good, but a lot of them don't want to do that.
All right, thank you. Mr. Chang, so again, your, how would you address the homelessness crisis, and do you support permanent supportive housing?
Hi, thanks, Jesse. Real, real quick clarification. I'm also an officer and enforce the law in my day job. And, but moving on from that, I, I kind of want to agree with the doctor here. I think mental health and homelessness is a very complicated issue, and, and mental health and plays a big part in that. I think the social workers and NGOs and nonprofits that do a lot of the groundwork know the best. They know the situation the best, and supporting like state-funded and community-funded NGOs and programs that have a track record of showing success and progress in treating and helping people in these situations, unfortunate situations, are, are the way to go forward. I believe that we can use those programs to our benefit. Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you. Moving on to a different topic, another question from a reader, this one from Patty Hanzo. She asks, "How will you seek justice in policing?" I guess, given, you know, everything that's protesting things going on in the country. What needs, what, I guess, if anything, needs to change to make the city's police officers more accountable? And then I would add on to that a more specific question, which is, do you support establishing a civilian police oversight commission? So I guess part one just is to reiterate is sort of, how would you seek justice and accountability with police? And then more specifically, do you support a civilian police oversight board? And I'll start with Dr. Kozzi.
Thank you, Jess. You know, policing is as technical as it is social, right? Because if you, if you have a police chief, you hire your police chief, you can't tie his hands behind his back and not let him enforce the law. We have a good police chief who's been, who's, who's been maintaining his staff to secure, safe and secure our community and give us a peace of mind. At the same time, there's a conversation in this country. There's an issue of racial justice, and that issue cannot be ignored, because moment for that is here, and here it is now. This is the largest civil rights movement we have seen on just that issue of excessive police force. We cannot ignore it. I think the civilian override oversight commissions can be useful, depending on how they're, they're used and when the need arrives. I'm personally open to that. I think, look, we live in a country of reform. Every field, every board meeting I attend, we talk about efficiency, reform, how we get better. I don't think any reasonable police chief or police force would ever resist the idea of reform. More training makes us better. Better training makes us more sophisticated, and we can perform better, and we can achieve both goals simultaneously, where we address the grievances of a suffering people who actually would like us to address this as a society, not just as a police force. At the same time, we just get better at policing.
Thank you. Let's see. I kind of lost whatever sense of order I had here, so we'll go to Mr. Sargent. So again, the question.
Could you, you, first of all, I want to apologize to McKenzie. I had no knowledge that he had a background in that. All due respect. Can you please restate the question again? Dr. Fozzie cut out in the weeds, and I kind of lost where we were going.
Yeah, no problem. So this is from, from reader Patty Hanzo. She asks, "How will you seek justice in policing? What needs to change to make the city's police officers more accountable? And do you support a civilian police oversight commission?"
Okay, first of all, as far as the, the police force, I have to say one thing about Fullerton PD, because I went to Fullerton Police Academy and trained with the sheriff also. We, we've got an outstanding police department. We've always had an outstanding police department. We've had some things that have happened through some bad cops. We have some of the best training in the country. Peace officer standard training is the best around the entire United States of America. I believe that oversight, you know, getting into the second part of the question, that, that, that could be helpful, but that should be a secondary. The first thing should be, should go to our lieutenants, our sergeants, our lieutenants, and our commanders, our watch commanders to oversee their officers and kind of keep track of them, how they're performing, and maybe give them some updating training like we used to do with Santa Ana. And that would be completely helpful. But all props to the Fullerton PD. They've overall been a pretty dang good department. And we haven't had a big problem with racial issues in the city, because we've never been a racial city. So I stand behind the officers and the training they have, and I think they're doing a pretty good job. We can always improve things, but let's give credit where credit's due. They're doing a pretty good job right now with the previous chief, and of course, the chief we had before that. I went to the academy, same academy. Was a good guy, and he did a lot of work and left behind some good stuff. So I'd say stick with the program we have. And if we want to add on some, some community involvement, that can't hurt us, but let's make sure we can do it, and we can afford to do that also.
All right, thank you. Let's see. Mr. Chang, next. Same question.
Thanks, Jesse. I, a little bit of my background is I've worked with, studying and overviewing transparency and how institutional trust is really important for citizens to put faith in their government. And what happened with, with Kelly Thomas, those are wounds that don't heal very quickly. And in the Fullerton Observer, you guys published the, the report that came out because of the California law, which, the transparency law. And it was, in my opinion, was very damning on the city, the police training, and how, how, how training had been done to train the officers who ended up killing Kelly Thomas. And for me, effective policing and effective police force is a police force that, that citizens trust, and they, they aren't afraid to call. They aren't afraid to use. And I know many people trust the Fullerton Police Department in Fullerton. My experience with them has always been positive. And, but I do think rebuilding trust and a citizen oversight board, those are all great ways of promoting trust and building that. Thank you.
And Mr. Dunlop, same question.
Thanks, Jesse. You know, look, I think in light of sort of the, the national attention that's being paid to this matter, I think, one, first and foremost, we need to fully fund our police department. We need to support law enforcement. I mean, our, you know, police officers go out and do a tough job to keep our community safe, and we need to support them in that job. And I think we can continue to do that through a couple of things. One, you know, I think that we can, we can work through community policing. Two, we can increase the training that's provided to our officers. And three, I, you know, I am supportive of civilian oversight in working with the police force. I think, I think good police officers will welcome that. And I think that's, you know, obviously here in Fullerton, we've got very strong civic engagement. And I think, you know, there would be a number of volunteers who would love to help, you know, kind of support and monitor, you know, what goes on in, you know, inside the police department. So I, I, I think that's, yeah, those are some of my ideas.
Thank you. I do know, just, I guess, sort of a note of history is that there was an effort to try to establish an oversight, police oversight commission after Kelly Thomas, and it was unsuccessful. There wasn't enough support either on council or in the department. So that would be a challenge. Okay, let's see. Where am I at here? Next question. Okay, here we go. So from Kathleen Shanfield, I believe she's actually a planning commissioner, or was. She asks, "As a person sitting on the council, how will you vote on preserving Coyote Hills as a park and recreation area? Would you try and save the entire 500 acres, or do you see development there?" And we'll go, I'm going to go from the kind of bottom right order, so go to McKenzie and then kind of work our way around. So did you get that question? Sorry, it was kind of, it was kind of long questions, but.
Can you, real quick?
Yeah, I'll read it again. So, "How would you vote on preserving Coyote Hills as a park and recreation area? Would you try and save the entire 500 acres, or do you see development there?"
Well, I know there's, there's been some back and forth in proposals from Sharon Quirksova and Newman on how much money and how, how much is allocated. I, I believe it's at 12 million now. I would love if we could preserve all of Coyote Hills. I know that's been a big push by the community, something that I enjoy personally, mountain biking through the area. And if it's possible to do it, I don't know the exact how much Chevron and the competing interests are going to push for their, their side, and I'm not sure how much our council will be able to affect that. But I would personally want as all of it. Like open spaces is probably the most important thing in, in, in our district that we all cherish and really value.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, Dr. Kozzi, again, so again, the question was, "How would you vote on preserving Coyote Hills as a park and recreation area?" And I guess maybe I should give a little bit of history, because, you know, I guess, as it stands now, the council did vote for a certain development proposal. I believe it's sort of been divided up into like neighborhoods right now, and so the question is sort of like, can we, can we preserve all those, all those areas or not? So I guess, yeah, how do you, how do you envision, and what is your view on preserving Coyote Hills? Can we, can we save all of it, or?
Sure. Thank, thank you, Jess. Thanks for the background. You know, if you're a parent or grandparent, and your everyday struggle is how to get your kids' heads out of those devices, and the Zoom school environment doesn't necessarily help, then you would really cherish your open spaces. My kids have little experiences whenever we go out on those trails, on those hikes, and it's incredible. Their, their young minds, creative minds will help them explore and grow. That's how many people here grew. We don't want to be in a position that only place left for us to take our kids is down to Laguna Hills Crystal Call for a hike. I support fully preserving Coyote Hills. I know two out of four parcels are secured, but two other parcels are still slated for development. And I, I, I can encourage and assure us that there, we can find ways to sustain that effort as well, to take all of it back and preserve all of it. That would be my goal. And further beyond that, other, other spaces that are zoned for parks, such as Bassett Cherry Tree Farm, are also important to preserve. I'm generally, I'm a strong proponent of preservation of our open spaces. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dunlop, same question.
So, yeah, this is an interesting question, and I really think it's about balance here. I'm.
Oh, sorry, let me, I'm going to mute Mr. Sargent there for you. Okay, go ahead.
Thanks. So I, I think it's about balance here. I'm supportive of the open space, but I'm also supportive of, of, you know, I think, I've been building houses. You know, I think additionally, what's important here is this is sort of in a, you know, in terms of preserving open space and in terms of preserving our local control, I, I think what's really concerning to me is this overreach from Sacramento where there's this, you know, it seems like more and more legislation trying to force sort of statewide legislation, you know, upon us here in Fullerton. And so I think we need to fight to preserve local control. And as a council member, I look forward to pushing back against Sacramento on some of the onerous legislation that gets thrust upon us here in, in Fullerton.
Let's see, I have a, just if I can, if I can right now, actually, just a follow-up question, then we'll go to Mr. Sargent. What do you, what do you mean specifically when you talk about local control versus Sacramento legislation as it relates to Coyote Hills?
Well, I think, you know, that, that was perhaps more in relation to, you know, the, the tree farm property that I think, you know, McKenzie and Faisal had both mentioned. You know, this is not something that is locally driven. This is something that's driven by Sacramento. And Sacramento politicians don't know what we in Fullerton want, and so I think it's important for us to speak up and fight back.
Got it. Thank you. All right, let's see, I'm going to unmute. Sorry. Oh, oh, there we go. Mr. Sargent, are you back? Are you there?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, sorry. All right. So did you get that question again? It was, "How would you vote on preserving Coyote Hills as a park and recreation area? Would you try and save all 500 acres, or do you see development happening there?"
Okay, thank you for the question. This question has been talked about for many, many years. It's been on the table and discussed back and forth. There's no, there's no clear answer for Coyote Hills. I'll say the same thing I said in 2016 when this conversation with you guys happened then. It's the same thing now. I said, "We would do whatever is financially responsible for the city." At that time, Hillcrest Park was falling apart, and they wanted to get up there and start to develop some of the trails, and we didn't have enough staff to even take care of Hillcrest Park. So I said that that wasn't possible, even though we would love to keep the open property. I want to keep it simple, because Coyote Hills is a complicated situation with Chevron. It's never been easy, so I don't want to drag anybody into false hopes or anything. We all hope that we can keep open space for, for our families. I'm a grandfather, irregardless of I'm a grandfather, father, or anything else, that open space up there has been talked about. That open space up there has been talked about and argued about and lawsuits filed back and forth for years and years and years. And we just hope that if we do get the open spaces, that we can maintain those spaces. That was, that was the major concern with us is are, are we financially stable enough to maintain those trails? Because you got to take care of those trails. You can't just take it. So you got to think further on to, if you just wanted to walk on it. And that, that's my concern, whatever's financially makes sense.
Got it. All right, thank you. All right, so moving on. So let's see. Let's see, okay, so from, from Jay Chen, we have a question. This was kind of a, a question that came up at the last council meeting. And it's been sort of a hot topic of discussion recently, which is what is your position on allowing short-term rentals and enforcing or regulating that in Fullerton? I think currently, right now, there's not really an ordinance for it. And at the last council meeting, council was pretty much divided on, you know, establishing an ordinance or not to regulate short-term rentals. So do you, I guess the question would be, are you in favor of allowing and regulating short-term rentals? And what's your kind of justification on that? We'll start with, we'll start with Mr. Sergeant. You can go first.
Thank you very much for the question. I've done a lot of studying about this because I visited with the families that 40 people who actually testified at the last council meeting, I was present on the internet and 20 other people who testified live, 17 citizens, three investors. The Airbnbs and the short-term rentals, I am not in favor of. And there's many reasons for it at the current time. And these are the numbers that are being given to me as a citizen. We have like 148 or 149 active Airbnbs and short-term rentals at the current time. The council's trying to vote in a cap on them of 500. Jan Florrie wants 600, Bruce Ritterer wants 700, and the citizens of this town want zero. So I stand with the citizens on this because I think whole house rentals for 30 days or more would be a good idea. But when you're talking about Airbnbs and short-term rentals, I think it, it destroys our neighborhood and their peace and tranquility, not only for the seniors, but for long-term residents that enjoy their kids driving their bikes on the streets and then have, have a party house next door. So I say that I'm not standing for that, so I would vote against that.
All right. And just to clarify, I believe the ordinance that they were voting on was to regulate short-term rentals in total and then to put a cap on the number of what's called whole house rentals. So that would be like, you know, where people rent an entire house. The proposed cap was five, was 500 for that. So Mr. Dunlop, what is your position on short-term rentals?
You know, this is simple to me, Jesse. I mean, this is a solution in search of a problem. It's a complete and total erosion of property rights. And I think it's absolutely short sighted. You know, when I was on the planning commission, we had a draft ordinance to allow short-term rentals in the city come before us. And it was interesting. It was, you know, very onerous. It would only allow like, you know, one or two per every 150 feet. And it just seemed like it was so restrictive that it would almost be impossible for people to take advantage of this great opportunity to earn some additional income. And so I, I think really, again, based on, you know, I asked, I asked staff if we were losing TOT revenue, if we were concerned about, you know, hotel room taxes that we were not bringing in as a result of it. They said, no, they couldn't quantify any, any losses. And, and again, I think, you know, when you hear about the number of issues that might have arise, I think those can be, those can be handled as a private property matter, perhaps between the property owner and the tenant. And, you know, or perhaps even with law enforcement, this isn't something that the city needs to step in and try to regulate. This is overregulation and we need to make sure that this doesn't happen in Fullerton.
Thank you. Dr. Kazi, your position on short-term rentals?
Thank you, Jess. Yes, I'm actually also opposed to short-term rentals. I think that the, the organized approach one needs for a proper regulation or collection of revenue for enforcement of, of rules is, it requires a whole, another level of staff support and sophistication. It is better suited to, it is better suited and left to resort towns. I've had great experience in renting them at Mammoth and Big Bear. Those towns really, their budgets depend on it, didn't really know how to process and run these programs. And we're not that kind of resort town. And even resort towns around us have actually deflected it. So it's a no-brainer to me as well. I, I don't think we need to necessarily expand or sustain these programs.
Thank you. And Mr. Chang?
I, I think the resort towns rejected them because they had very powerful hotel lobbies. For me, it's, it's also government overreach. It's, I think about people in a time when money can be tight. They, they're allowed, they can rent out a room to someone who's coming and wanting to enjoy Fullerton. We have a lot. I mean, we're not a resort town, but there's a lot of things in Fullerton that people outside of Fullerton want to enjoy. And staying with a local family is something that I've done in traveling in, across the country in different parts of the world. And it's amazing that, that you, you're allowed to do that and meet with people that are local and can show you things that you can do in the city. To me, it's overreach, it infringes on people's property rights of what they can do with their, their homes in terms of party houses. It's got to be a small minority of, of cases that happen and those can be dealt with legally with the police. Thank you.
All right. All right, so also a little bit of division there, kind of reflecting the council, I suppose. Which is good, disagreement, that's, that's good, that's okay. Okay, we have a question from, and I don't know how, how much you guys know about this. I'll admit that I'm kind of learning about it, but I, I guess I'll just put this question out there. And you can answer sort of based on your current level of knowledge, which again, mine is not that great. But from reader Jose Trinidad Castaneda, he asks, do you support efforts for bold climate action and joining Irvine's effort to create a community choice energy program? So one thing that the council has not voted on, I think there was a report given recently about what's called community choice energy or community choice aggregation, which has to do with giving cities, I believe, more energy options than just going with, say, like the, you know, Edison or, or whatever. I don't know a ton about it, but I'll just throw it out there based on what you may or may not know. So would you support joining, I guess Irvine is exploring it right now, Irvine's effort to create a community choice energy program for Fullerton? And we'll start with Mr. Chang, you go first.
I, I, I don't think we need an initiative to do that. The place I live in, we have solar panels in our house. We've taken advantage of the rebates that the state has provided and federally. I, I can't imagine that there's many people who in Southern California don't want to take advantage of solar. And I don't think there needs to be extra incentives for people to want to do that. I, yeah, I don't think we need to spend money or, or push, push an initiative like this. But thanks, Jose, for the question.
Again, I'm still learning myself, so, so I'm sure this will come up again at, at council meetings. But Dr. Kazi, your response on community choice energy or?
Sure, thanks again, Jess. You know, it's a highly technical issue. It's just presented to the council, it's being absorbed and deliberated on, there'll be more presentations on that. There is a certain degree of market volatility. It's not just about bold action climate. This state has lived through an energy crisis. And the, the market volatility that the, the program, program brings, brings forth is not necessarily what the communities might want to go through again. I have a lot of reservations about it. I think it's a program that needs to be further and more deeply studied. At the same time, you know, we do have other forms of alternative energy and sources. Solar has been a very popular program, there's still rebates available for that. And those, those, those sort of sustaining, those sort of projects is still a better way to go in terms of preservation and savings on energy.
All right, thank you. Mr. Dunlop, your, do you have a position or thoughts about Fullerton joining or establishing a community choice energy program?
You know, look, I'm supportive of green building codes. I'm supporting of green construction standards, but, you know, including taking steps to make sure that we're, you know, introducing sustainability standards from a power and water conservation standpoint in the, you know, the new residential unit, nude residential or construction development here in town. But, you know, I'm not supportive of something that's going to be bad for Fullerton. And so I think we need to weigh that out as, as it comes up for discussion.
Okay. And Mr. Sergeant, you have a position on community choice energy or community choice aggregation?
Yeah, thank you for the question. I have no problem with any program coming out of Irvine. If it's something that we need to prioritize, but I'm staying focused on our water situation prior to joining any other adventures into the, what you're speaking of tonight. I think our water situation is something that, that's going to have to be resolved first before we can start moving into a joint venture with another city by putting their plans in. That's my position on that.
Okay. So I think we have time for perhaps one more question. And so this one, so obviously we've organized this by district. And so I want to give you each a chance to answer the question of what do you feel is the most important issue that is unique to District Two? So, you know, I guess for those of you who are watching at home and maybe aren't, you know, aren't familiar, this will be the first time in Fullerton's history that people living in these areas of Fullerton, District One, District Two, and District Four will be able, will be voting on a representative for their area of the city. So this is a kind of a new and important thing. So I'd like you to ask, to ask you, what do you see as the most important or pressing issue for District Two, for your area of the city? So we'll start with Mr. Dunlop.
You know, I, I think this is an interesting question because really whether you live in District Two or you live in District Four or Five, look, the biggest issue facing Fullertonians today is the issue of our road streets, is the condition of our road streets and infrastructure. So I think really anybody that would tell you otherwise doesn't know the city of Fullerton. You know, we've lived with these conditions for absolutely too long. And it's time for us to work together to fix our roads and streets once and for all.
All right. We'll go to Dr. Kazi. The most important issue unique to District Two?
Thanks, Jessica. The most unique, the, the issue that seems to be most unique to District Two, although we're looking at the topography of the entire city, is really preservation of open spaces. This is an issue that's acute, it's, it's, it's an urgent issue. People in District Two have looked at the development of the rest of the city. And now they've, they've strongly feel that the open spaces in their park zones are threatened in District Two. Our topography characteristics of this community is very unique and it has the very little bit of left from that open space. I think the citizens have a very strong opinion on that, the residents do. I'm a product of this district, I'm here and I feel the same way. And I'm a strong proponent of preservation of our open spaces.
Thank you. Mr. Sergeant, so what issue unique to District Two?
This is very simple for me because my whole campaign is based on one reason to run for city council, streets, 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 streets and streets. That's why I'm running, that's why I'm supported by the families, over 25 families in my, just in my local neighborhoods because they're tired of the empty promises that we're going to fix the streets. And everybody always campaigns on this. I get tired of hearing that after a while that we're all campaigning, fix the streets, fix the streets. But I don't know if anybody's done the homework to see what it's going to take to fix the streets. I have, I'm running on streets, it's on my signs. I'm the street candidate out of everybody running and that's what I'm going to focus on. And that's why I have my support from the voters right now, is because of the streets, that's what motivated me to get in. That's what's going to motivate me to stay in. And I will solve the problem when I get the vote to be on council for District Two. I will fix the streets. I have, that, that's my destination. I will accomplish it, I will achieve it, and I know how to get us there and I will do it.
All right, thank you. And Mr. Chang, so most unique issue for District Two?
I, I think District Two has some very smart and engaged voters. And they know all of those are issues that everyone mentioned. We, we love our open spaces and they're threatened. We love having decent roads to drive on because that's just common sense. And so my biggest, the biggest issue for us is why are these threatened? Why are these problems? Why are we afraid that we're going to lose open space? Why are we clamoring and always fighting for better streets? It's because we don't have money. We're, we're, we have too many liabilities and we're not bringing in enough revenue. And we have a city council who, Jesse, like you kind of alluded to earlier, when you laughed about the division amongst us on the Airbnb issue. Our city, our city council members don't work together very well. They pay bullish issues, they push things, kick things, that, coming up with solutions and working with people that are also were elected next to them. And so our biggest issue is fixing the budget and have, electing someone that's going to help fix the budget so that we don't fear bad roads and losing our open spaces.
All right, thank you. Well, it looks like we have exactly four minutes left. So I'm going to ask one more question of all of you, which I didn't ask of the last candidates, but I feel like there's a lot of, a lot of information. This was, you know, kind of a lengthy forum and I appreciate you guys all participating. If I could ask you, the risk of being contentious, to say, what distinguishes you from the other candidates? What, what makes you unique as a candidate? Based on maybe some of the things that were brought up tonight. So what? So yeah, well, let's do that. And we'll, we'll start with McKenzie and work our way back to Mr. Sergeant. So what distinguishes you from the other candidates?
Sure. I'm definitely one of the younger candidates, probably the youngest. I've, I have a very, despite my age, though, I have a very diverse background of jobs that I've done and work that I've done with the State Department, with abroad and, and at home, with refugee communities and the federal government here. There's probably probably no one that'll spend as much time researching an issue and engaging with, with the community as I will. I'm kind of always on that. And I probably just shoot straight for the issues. I, I really want pension reform and people to understand that it's such a big part of the issues in our city and that we won't be able to move forward and solve it as a city if we don't fix this issue. And, and I want more people to talk about it. And that's what sets me apart. Thank you.
Let's see, I forgot the kind of order. I'm going to go to Dr. Kazi. So what, what distinguishes you as a candidate?
Yes, I'm running on a platform of build, serve, and heal. And this has been my, this has been my life. I've been able to build with nonprofit organizations and small business and have made them very successful in terms of reaching out to people and serving the community. I've been able to serve where I have been able to serve with social service drives, toy drives, meal drives, food drives, north and south of Fullerton, and I heal. I've had, I'm blessed with the opportunity and be touched by people who I've had a chance to work with. A patient of mine, every time she's a middle, middle-aged woman in her late 50s, early 60s, every time she comes to the office, she gives me a big hug and she says, she turns, turns around to my medical students and says, I want to thank this doctor for saving my life. And she only has minor illnesses. These are the people that have been in my life. It is the inspiration from these people that I am dedicated and passionate about serving our community at the city council. I intend to make, ensure that we are roads and repairs are done. I had a water leak for two days and on my street, it's more than just roads, it's water mains, it's, it's our entire infrastructure, that our community has business opportunities for growth and that our residents, especially our seniors, have a, have a public health, safe and secure environment. And thank you for Fullerton Observer for hosting this.
Thank you. Mr. Dunlop, what distinguishes you as a candidate?
Well, I think I said, as, like I said, as the, at the outset of the program tonight, I'm a third generation Fullerton resident, born and raised here in town. And now I'm raising my own two little girls here. I've got a history of success in the private sector and I've been involved with a number of city and county committees. And, you know, I think the Fullerton voters need to know, they have my commitment that I won't bring national politics to City Hall. I'm here to work for them, I'm here to work with my fellow council members to fix the issues that are facing us right now, today. And believe me, nobody will work harder for you than I will. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Sergeant, what distinguishes you? Well, okay, I'm going to guess roads, but you can't say roads.
Streets.
Yeah, I'm sorry, what distinguishes you as a candidate?
Well, first of all, I too grew up in this city for over 45 years. I grew up in this city and have a history here also. And I am a successful businessperson for 22 straight years. As a president of my corporation, so I'm very good with business management and money budgets, financial budgets. You know, I'm, I'm sorry, some of the questions get out into the weeds and people start talking, you know, into open spaces when the question's directed one way, so it kind of misleads the, the other way. One of the things that I will say is I'm very bothered. One of the things that I will say is I'm very bothered by some of the development, things that are going on, overdevelopment in this city, and this is a big complaint from many, many citizens. And I'm very concerned that, that we put people in chairs that are powerful developers that we've had on council before and I don't think we need to overdevelop anymore. I think we need to slow down, put more oversight in neighborhoods and give residents more approval. I think we need to put into effect an approval from neighbors before developments go on, that they have to vote, that things can't just go through council and be voted by five people on the dais and the next thing you know, you've got a 30-foot structure behind your home that you've lived in for 30 months. So that's my biggest concern, that's what makes me different from the other ones. I'm not, I'm not going to allow that. I think oversight is, is needed more than anything else in this, in this environment we're in right now.
Thank you, Mr. Sargent. Well, I want to, I want to thank all of you for participating tonight and hopefully it was illuminating to the viewers and the voters. And so I wish you all the best of luck and we're going to move to our next little section of District Four candidates. So thank you very much and.
Thanks, Jesse.
Yeah. Have a good night.
Thank you, Jesse. Be safe. Thank you.
All right, so I'm going to, I've got, let's see. People. Not sure, so we're going to now move into, in a moment, move into the next section, which is District Four candidates. However. Do we have a Rooney, Matt? I don't, I, I, yep. Looks like they're both just connecting to, to the audio. It's a bit of a marathon, guys, a lot of, a lot of information. Hopefully it's not too much, but we will be hooking this as well.
Did you bring a snack, Jesse?
I brought a little coffee.
Okay.
All right, looks like they're both connecting. I'm not sure what.
They're in, they're in the green room, they're in the waiting, I'm told that they're in the waiting room.
Yes.
Okay. You could talk to Doc and the band for a moment here. Doc here, is Doc not here?
Why is this taking so long for them to connect? I don't get that.
Are you able to key them in? Okay.
Looks like Bruce is connected.
Yes, I can hear you, but the volume's low.
Oh, I can't see you, Bruce. Let's see, oh, oh wait, let me ask to start video. Let's see. He's in. Sorry, for those who are, who are waiting, just a little technical difficulty here, but we'll just bear, bear with us for just a moment. Bruce, are you able to? I can only see you, I can't, oh, there you are. Can you hear me okay?
I need a little more volume, let me see what I can do here.
Okay. I'm on, I'm on full volume on my end, so if you can. All right, we're just, we're just waiting for.
Oh, there.
Oh.
We've got it.
Okay, great. Looks like a Rooney is just joining us, he's connecting to audio. So just hold tight for just a moment.
Sure.
Matt, are you getting a message from a Rooney or it looks like?
Sorry, I've got nothing on the chat from him, we'll check here with the rest of our staff.
It says he's connecting to audio, but.
Rooney's saying that he's in the waiting room?
I have someone named Posh.
Give it a shot.
There he is.
There he is. Okay.
Hello, okay. I'm going to remove whoever, Monty, is that your, your child?
That's my dad.
Okay.
Yeah. Hey dad, sorry.
Bye-bye, Monty. Okay. All right, so can you guys hear me okay? Audio is okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, so here we are in the homestretch of our candidate forum. So we, we are joined tonight by the two candidates running for District Four, which also happens to be my own district, so I'm interested in what you have to say. So the kind of basic ground rules, and we've got about 30 minutes that we're going to do this until maybe 8:30 or a little beyond because we had kind of a late start. The ground rules are you have one minute to respond to the questions and Matt, the headphones man in the, on there, is going to give you a 30-second reminder of when you have 30 seconds left and then, and then another sign that says time's up when your time's up. So you can kind of follow that for your answers. All right, so the first sort of question is, I'd like you each to introduce yourself and say why you're running for city council and we'll start with you, Mr. Whitaker.
Yes, I'm Bruce Whitaker. I'm a current council member at large for the city of Fullerton. I believe that the fourth district gets short shrift very often in terms of policy decisions at City Hall, so I would like to make sure that we're well represented. The second reason I'm running for council is that so often council members look from the inside out when we're really there as council members to represent the people, the residents, the small businesses, the people in the city. So it's important for that voice to be heard at city council.
All right, thank you. And same, Mr. Takur, if you could introduce yourself and say why you're running for council.
Yes, thank you, by the way, to the Fullerton Observer. Thank you, Bruce, for being here tonight. I grew up in the fourth district. My dad worked at Hunts for almost 20 years. My mom also worked there. I attended Orange Door Elementary, Nicholas Junior High School and Sunny Hills High School and that's where I met my amazing wife Pamela, we're high school sweethearts. I then became an attorney and for the last 10 years I've been representing businesses in workers' compensation cases. So I have the hometown experience, but also the private experience, private industry experience, and also the legal training that's going to help me get the fourth district the kind of representation it deserves. I serve on the Fullerton Elementary School District currently. I would be remiss if I didn't thank my board members for working with me to make sure that I could get here tonight on time. We had a school board meeting, I'm very grateful. And it's that kind of working together with my colleagues on the board, not just voting alone, that's going to help us move this city forward. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, so first question, kind of the, the elephant in the room with regards to city council is the budget, right? So currently, the city is facing a fairly sizable deficit and the solution put forward currently, I'm sure as you know, by the city manager and city council, with the exception of you, Mr. Whitaker, is a proposed sales tax, also called Measure S. And so my question is, do you support the proposed sales tax? I realize it's a voter question, but I'd like to, you know, get your position. And then if not, what specific proposals do you have to address the city's financial problems? So do you support the Measure S? And then if not, how do we, you know, get out of this, this hole, I guess? Let's start with Mr. Takur on, on that one.
Sure. Well, you know what? I have to say, first of all, to my opponent's first comment, after 10 years of being on the city council, if he still thinks that he's got an outsider's perspective, he's the longest-serving person on this, on this council and he's seeking his final term. So I think that we definitely need new leadership. The question is about Measure S, it's on the ballot the same time as I am. As a voter, as a concerned voter, I'm supporting Measure S. I think the city needs this issue and I think too many city councils have kicked the can down the road for the last 20 or 30 years. I do respect the opinion of the voters, though, and I fear that if it doesn't pass, there will be significant cuts that will be necessary, positions that will be left open and Fullerton will have less services than we're used to. But if it does pass and I'm elected, I have committed to putting a significant chunk of the revenue, 60, 70, 80%, towards infrastructure only. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whitaker. So your position, which I think I know what it is because I saw you vote, but your position on Measure S and then if you don't support it, what specific ideas do you have to deal with the deficit?
Well, I strongly oppose the measure. There's no reason at all why Fullerton should become one of the two highest taxed cities in Orange County. And higher taxes, fees, and regulations in this city make it a very business unfriendly place and unfriendly to residents as well. It's interesting that my opponent choose, chooses to attack me right out of the gate. It shows someone who's bereft of any real, you know, solutions for the city. My solution would be, when you, when you're in a hole financially, you stop digging. And the council majority, unfortunately, over the last few years, has granted multi-year raises, which equate to a very large amount of what our deficit is right now and, and our projected deficits. And each time that those boosts occur, we have also a commensurate increase in the pension liability. And so when you're, when you're in a hole, you stop digging and that's what the council majority should have been doing. I voted consistently against those increases and all that Mr. Takur would do, should he be on the council, is make it a 5-0 vote, still for these bad policies that have gotten us where we are now.
This is more contentious than the last one. I don't know if I should allow, like, I think I'm just going to keep moving on. So we've heard your positions, I want to be able to cover as many issues as possible. So, okay, thank you for your response. Okay, so we have some reader questions. So Wendy Florin asks, I guess this is kind of related to the last question as well. She says, our roads are arguably the worst in all of Orange County. Repairing potholes is not a viable fix. If elected, would you make repairing our roads a priority? And I guess most significantly, how would you propose to pay for this? Mr. Whitaker, you can go first on this one.
Yes, the roads, the streets have been my top priority since my first term as mayor in 2013 and again in 2017. And I helped to drive efforts to commit more monies, at least in the short term, toward a street replacement and street repair. So when you do occupy that seat and/or you have the mayorship, you have an ability to affect the agenda of the council and I've done that. However, the real follow-through part of this, which is to make sure that we're getting really good lasting work done on the streets, that hasn't really been followed through upon. The majority of the council would rather go searching for new revenues and then demonstrably those revenues don't go for pavement repairs. I always say it's payroll, perks and pensions over pavement. And that's been the, really the MO of the current majority, the recent majorities on the council. I am the one person bringing up the alternative solutions and that's why it's important to have someone in there who understands what it's going to take to turn this around without new taxes.
Thank you. Mr. Takur, same question about the roads. I can read it again, it says, our roads are arguably the worst in all of Orange County. Repairing potholes is not a viable fix. If elected, would you make repairing our roads a priority and how would you propose to pay for this?
Sure, and maybe it is a little bit more contentious, but apparently the city council cares too much about pensions, but if one were to visit the website, Transparent California, one would see that Mr. Whitaker has been drawing salaries from the Orange County Water District, from the sanitation district. And if you look on the city council website, Mr. Whitaker has the highest compensation rate of any other council member. On day one, by taking a lower salary than Mr. Whitaker, I would be putting more money back into our general fund. But the roads are a problem and I think that somebody that's had 10 years to address this issue and still believes that it's an issue that needs to be addressed, but won't talk about ways to increase revenue, is maybe not totally serious about the problem. I do think that the city has a good system for determining which roads need to go first, but having served on ERM, I know that our water pipes are seriously behind in terms of replacement and they need to be addressed together.
All right, thank you. Next question comes from Faith Forcucci Morris. She asks, this is kind of a long question, so I'm just going to read it. How will you address the homelessness crisis in Fullerton? Fullerton recently built a navigation center, which is a temporary, though important, solution. Do you support expanding permanent supportive housing to integrate formerly homeless people into our community? So I guess number one is how would you address homelessness crisis more generally? And then specifically, would you support building more permanent supportive housing in the city? And I think Brucey went first last time, so a Rooney, you can go first this time.
Thank you. The fourth district of Fullerton has disproportionately borne the issue of homelessness. It is a reasonable, a regional problem. And I think that what the fourth district needs is somebody that isn't on record saying that this is only the churches problem. This is a government problem and the churches are a part of it, the community is a part of the solution, but by being the home of the Armory, we became ground zero for this issue. I applaud the navigation center. I applaud Buena Park, Placentia, and Anaheim for stepping up. And I believe that this kind of regional cooperation is the exact issue that plays to my strengths, working with other council members on, in Fullerton and in neighboring cities to find solutions. If we were to allow land, apartment owners to evict people during this time of COVID, our homeless problem would be even worse. We would see families on the streets. And that's why I was surprised that Mr. Whitaker voted against an eviction moratorium.
All right, Mr. Whitaker, same question.
The, the one thing that I agree with, which what was stated was that Fullerton has done more than its share when it comes to homeless and trying to, to reduce or eliminate the impact of homelessness in our city. And we have, especially the fourth district, has done more than its share as far as carrying, carrying the load. But you know, one of the things that's going to be important is that we don't try to overcompensate and impose upon our residents and on our city and make the city permanently known as the center for homelessness in the North County. I believe it's a very unfair situation. Fullerton's willing to do its part, as it's always done, but that's, that's going too far. And I think it's important to protect neighborhoods from these impacts. It's important to reduce the amount of crime and the concerns about safety that people have, should we become the center for so many different homeless shelters and facilities. So I listen to residents often. I don't know where my opponent's coming up with some of this stuff. I guess an attorney is trained to attack just about every time and he's, he's making up some facts as we go along. The fact is that I've worked hard to help reduce what we've seen have been the, the tangible impacts of homelessness here on our streets in the fourth district.
Let's go on to another question. This is from reader Patty Hanzo. She asks, how will you seek ju, I guess, given the current political moment that we're in, in terms of, you know, protests regarding police brutality, Black Lives Matter, et cetera? Her question is, how will you seek justice in policing? What needs to change to make the city's police officers more accountable? And I will add to that a more specific question, which is, do you support establishing a civilian police oversight board? So how will you seek justice in policing? What changes need to happen to make the city's police officers more accountable and do you support civilian police oversight? Sorry, that's three questions, but Mr. Whitaker.
Yes, I've always supported some civilian oversight of the police department because it is important that once in a while, if you have a bad officer, a bad incident or, or concern, it is important to have outside eyes looking in on that and doing their part to at least, it creates a pressure relief valve for the public who can, who can express their concerns if you have an abuse of power or overuse of force. People should recall that my time on the council, I was the one council member who consistently stood up in the Kelly who consistently stood up in the Kelly Thomas matter to ensure that we had a, an airing, uh, complete airing of the facts that were involved and to make sure that we would achieve some amount of reform, uh, from that terrible situation. And we became, you know, it was national and international news, and it's a shame that our city would be attached to, to such an occurrence as, as occurred in that case. So I think it's important for people to be strong in terms of ensuring that we have really good public safety that stays in bounds and yet have a heart and understand sometimes when a tragedy has occurred, uh, what's the right way to address it and the right way to try to deal with the aftermath.
All right. Thank you. Uh, uh, Mr. Takur, again, uh, the question, kind of three-part, you can approach this how you like, but, "How will you seek justice in policing? What needs to make, what needs to change to make the city's police officers more accountable? And do you support a civilian police oversight commission?"
I do support a civilian oversight commission. What's needed to change the issues with police interaction with certain communities, whether it's the African-American community or the mental health community, is a greater focus on, um, police or maybe non-police actors from within departments or other social services being the first on the scene. I don't think, uh, mentally ill person that's not armed, uh, should be met with armed, um, police, uh, officers. I'm very strong on public safety. I'm very proud to be supported by the Fullerton firefighters. I did not seek the Fullerton Police Officers Association endorsement because I do want to have an honest discussion about what policing means in our community. But in terms of how we really solve these issues, um, I'm very proud of supporting a Black Lives Matter resolution on the school district because I think it really begins with society and it begins with, uh, communities, uh, talking about racism, talking about mental health.
All right. Thank you. So we're, we're kind of doing a, a big jump to different issues. I want to get to as many issues as possible, uh, from, uh, reader, and I believe she's also a planning commissioner, Kathleen Shanfield. Uh, she had a question. She asks, "As a person sitting on council, how would you vote on preserving Coyote Hills as a park and recreation area? Would you try and save the entire 500 acres, or do you see development there?" I forgot who went first last time. I want to be fair. Uh,
Bruce did.
It was Bruce. So, uh, Mr. Takur, so that was, I guess, kind of generally your position on Coyote Hills. Do you, yeah.
Yeah, you know, there was a question asked in the forum, uh, that was, uh, that took place last night. And the question generally was, "What, as a candidate, have you maybe changed a position on, and why?" Uh, my understanding is that Coyote Hills, in particular, will not be coming back to the Fullerton City Council for various legal reasons, for an up or down, thumbs up, thumbs down vote on the, on the development itself. But after meeting with the Friends of Coyote Hills, um, and hearing about this issue and learning more about it, uh, my position is that I support efforts of the community and state legislature, the state legislators, pardon me, to, uh, work together. And if Chevron were to name a price and the community were to be able to meet that price through various efforts, they could buy the ran- land outright and preserve the last large open space in North Orange County. So, um, really, it's about evolution. It's about being open-minded, and, um, I really appreciated meeting with the friends. And so I support those ongoing efforts, but as a council member, it's not clear to me that that issue would come back.
Okay. And, uh, Mr. Whitaker, uh, same, same question.
Well, there's a long record in terms of, uh, where I'm at on this issue, but the thing that I'm most concerned about is, uh, that property has been sealed off from the public for decades. Now, when, uh, there was a plan established way back when, and there's been a, a lack of willingness to compromise a little bit. It's been strictly an all or nothing proposal. And even though there's been a lot of retrenchment in terms of development, uh, proposals, and there have been monies obtained to purchase larger segments to expand even more the already, uh, generous, uh, open space accommodations there. It's just, there are so many people who love our trail systems and our parks in Fullerton, and I'm one of those and someone who uses them, and I think it's wonderful that a lot of, uh, open space can be had still in West Coyote Hills. But it's been unavailable to the citizenry, and it's been unavailable to our housing needs for these decades. And I think it's a shame that it's been dragged out so long. Uh, there needed to be cooler heads who said, "Look, uh, we're not going to get a full loaf, and this battle goes on and on. Let's see what we can do to get most of what we want and go forward from that." You know, recently, a discussion at the council, they were bemoaning the fact that we're short housing units in the city. And so part of the reason is that this has been an opportunity that's been missed for too long.
All right. Thank you. Um, let's see. Looks like we got time for maybe two more questions. Um, so I, I do want to ask about, uh, housing. You mentioned housing, uh, Bruce, and that is, uh, you know, the, this, the state goal, like kind of this, I don't remember, the, the projected number of units that the city is meant to build, uh, to kind of deal with the housing crisis, is something like 13,000 housing units within the next seven or eight years? And so I guess, uh, my question, uh, would be, what do you see as the city's role in achieving, uh, these, these sorts of housing goals, both in terms of number of units? And also the RENA, you know, the RHNA numbers in terms of affordable housing units as well? I mean, uh, what, what do you see as, as the council's role in, uh, in achieving those things? And I, I think, Bruce, it's your, you go first on this one.
Yeah, the RENA, the Regional Housing Needs Assessment, uh, is driven in large part by interested parties in Sacramento who profit from home building and, and want to produce as many units as possible. Uh, you know, in many ways, they're doing a good thing in terms of providing jobs and, and something that's needed, which is, uh, housing. However, we've got to look at where Fullerton is as well. Uh, Fullerton is a built-out city already. And I have rejected the notion of an, uh, accelerated urbanization of Fullerton. We, uh, the grid upon which the city is, is developed, it can't handle the overcrowding, uh, of streets and, and parking overflow, and I do have concerns about multi-story buildings backing up against long-established neighborhoods. So, uh, you know, again, the RENA numbers, uh, those have been imposed on cities for many, many years, and most of the time of cities making some progress, uh, you know, it's, it's going to work out fine. But I think instead of councils just rubber-stamping these proposals, you need to respect the neighborhoods and respect the process in terms of saying, "Is this becoming overbuilt? Are we creating a problem? We're creating many new problems, uh, in, in this overbuilding."
And Mr. Takur, uh, same question. So what do you see as council's role in achieving these, uh, like state housing goals and then also our, uh, RENA numbers specifically with regards to affordable housing?
Yeah, I want to thank, um, City Manager Ken Domer for providing some updated information, which I'll provide now. According to the city manager, the RENA, RHNA allocation for Fullerton is 13,272. And, uh, of that, 7,497, uh, should be income-restricted affordable, with another 5,775 units that are market rate. So I think maybe if there's, um, scaring communities that 13,000 units need to be very low income, and that's just not correct. For Southwest Fullerton and the 4th District in particular, I'd like to see cutting of red tape and fees for ADUs, alternative dwelling units or granny flats. I think that's an affordable way, um, for lower, or fixed-income, uh, individuals to add more space that they can then rent out. That really brings me to another point, which is higher-dense city housing with, uh, more affordable housing built in, which is negotiated by the city with developers. I'm in favor of that, mixed-use developments as well. I also think we should talk about short-term rentals, but my time's up.
Uh, I did want to, uh, yeah, good, okay, yeah, I said we'll go over 8:30 a little bit, so I will ask about short-term rentals next. We have a question from Jay Chen Reader. Uh, "What is your position on whole-house short-term rentals and its enforcement in Fullerton?" I know, uh, before you answer that, I know at the last council meeting, um, Mr. Whitaker, uh, obviously you were part of that discussion. Uh, you know, the council seemed divided, you know, on the, on the question of allowing and regulating short-term rentals. Uh, and so I, I guess, what is your position? And so I think, uh, Mr. Takur, that's to you first.
Sure. Well, I mean, I, I think what really also drives this issue is not just the how high and unreasonable housing costs of North Orange County, but also our proximity to Disneyland as an entertainment location, not Sperry Farm. And, um, I do believe that once you allow, uh, whole-home rentals, you create a, a legal classification, which if you try to remove that later, it could, uh, lead to litigation for the city, which I, um, am not in favor of. But at the same time, I see that a portion, uh, renting out a portion of your home for someone on a fixed income that lives in a home, then maybe they can't afford to go anywhere else and they want to rent out a room. I, I think this is reasonable. I realize, another thing that I've learned, just going about this candidacy, um, even renting out rooms in a house can have a negative effect on, uh, local home prices. However, uh, I do think the city needed to split the baby. I was, um, happy to see the discussions, and I really think that's the purpose of being on city council, is to find common ground. Compromise is not a dirty word.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Whitaker, your position on, uh, short-term rentals?
Well, I support short-term rentals, uh, partly as a property rights issue. And I think people responsibly can lease out their properties in whole or in portion without creating a lot of trouble. Uh, typical scare tactics have been used in this, you know, picking out just a handful of examples where you might have a party house, uh, in, in a situation like this over a weekend. I know that that's very aggravating to the neighbors, but the statistics have been skewed in the city, and, uh, there's so much anecdotal evidence, and that came up in the last council meeting. Uh, what you, what you need to do with this is have a rational discussion and allow people the maximum amount of freedom to do what they will with their property as long as they're not harming other people. And, you know, the noise and the parking and traffic issues, uh, that have been the source of most of the complaints about these, uh, short-term rentals, those can be handled easily by, uh, standard code enforcement and standard, uh, police action as well. Only deal with the exception. Don't try to ban everything because, because of a few, uh, bad actors.
All right. Well, it looks like we're, uh, we're approaching the end of our allotted time, so I want to end with, um, one question, and, uh, that question is, um, actually, I'm kind of debating between two questions, but, uh, I'll let you pick. I'll let you pick which one you want to answer. Okay, so option one is, "What is the most unique issue for District 4?" You can answer that, or you can answer, "What distinguishes you from your opponent as a candidate?" So either then, "What is the most unique issue in District 4?" or "What distinguishes you as a candidate?" And, uh, that's, who's, sorry, I'm all, I'm mixed up. Who's first? Is that, I don't remember. Uh, Eeny, meeny, miny, moe, Bruce, you can go. Okay, so either, "What is the most unique issue for District 4?" or "What distinguishes you most from your opponent?"
Well, I think what distinguishes me most from my opponent is that I stick to the issues, and I bring civility to the council sessions, and I, I am a policy wonk. I like to get into the whys and wherefores and what's going to serve our residents and our small businesses best. Um, it's important to have experience. I've had experience at the county level, at the state level, uh, special districts, uh, also private sector experience. I was a financial controller, chief financial manager. I was administrator of a medical center. Uh, I've been in the for-profit sector and then as an activist in the public sector, and then also as an appointed and elected official. And it takes time. There's a learning curve for that. And since now the city's back is against the wall financially, and when the sales tax is defeated soundly, which is what will happen, you're going to need people who will take a sober look at what we're dealing with and insist on performance at City Hall. And rather than being a fundraising vehicle, you know, a revenue-seeking organism, which is what most local governments are nowadays, we can set about focusing on solving the problems and pro- providing better productivity from City Hall.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Takur, so again, uh, you can choose, "What is the most unique district issue in District 4?" or "What distinguishes you most from, uh, your opponent?"
Sure. Um, I guess I'll have to respond. Um, you know, I, I, the reason I'm choosing, um, a distinction between Bruce and myself is that, uh, the 4th District is just not unique. North Orange County and Orange County in general used to be, uh, economically sort of isolated. We were a wealthy, uh, bedroom community. We had a lot of good jobs here. Uh, we're now, uh, seeing a lot of urban problems. And I think that if you have the same solution to every problem, uh, you're not really talking about solutions at all. Um, cutting taxes and strangling government are not solutions, uh, in these difficult times. We've never really recovered from the Great Recession, and now we're heading into COVID. And just for example, voting against masks because that's a good business policy? Um, I don't know what policy that, that is and how all these years in government could have led Mr. Whitaker to think that businesses that spend so much money training their employees wouldn't want to wear masks, have them wear masks and have their customers wear masks to save their lives?
Okay, uh, I suppose in fairness, I'm going to let Mr. Whitaker just respond to that mask thing that you raised because, uh, if you'd like to respond to that, Mr. Whitaker.
Hey, thank you, Jesse. Uh, I don't know where he's creating this stuff up out of whole cloth or whatever, but, uh, I'd love for him to be able to document some of these assertions he's been making. It is important as an attorney that he needs to operate with evidence and proof, and he hasn't really provided any here.
I hope we could go back and forth, I, I suppose, on this, uh, but I'll, uh, I guess I'll leave that to, uh, to the, to the voters to, to investigate, uh, but we are out of time, uh, for tonight. So, uh, thank you very much. I really appreciate you guys taking the time in this later slot, uh, the later hour. And, uh, so, uh, thank you very much, and I, I, best of luck on your campaigns, and I'll, I'll see you around town, I imagine.
Thank you.
Thanks to the observer. Appreciate it.
All right. Have a good night.
Okay, you too.
All right, and, uh, let's see. There. Oh, get Bruce out of there.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah. All right, so, um, well, thank you, uh, oops, let's see, you go to the gallery view. Thank you very much, everyone, for tuning in to our candidate forum. I hope you found that, uh, informative, and, uh, obviously, we, you know, we could talk about these issues for many, many hours and, uh,
Jesse, still live on Facebook?
Yep.
Jesse, um, if people want to watch this, if they missed any of it, where can they find the recording?
Oh, yeah. Okay, thank you. Uh, so yes, we're gonna, we're, we are recording this, and, uh, we'll be posting it on our YouTube channel, and then we'll be sharing that on our social media, and we'll post it on our website, which is fullertonobserver.com. And so, yeah, thank you guys all for, uh, joining in. Matt, did I miss any, anything or, uh? You're like, yeah, okay, my time, my time is also up, and, uh, all right. So thank you guys all for tuning in, and, uh, I'm going to, um, uh, say goodnight. So take care of everyone.
Be crazy.
All right, and, uh, I'm gonna stop recording here.